Should we just make the subject to proper insurance?
Okay.
John, that's it?
I'm okay. At this time, we will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move then to Agenda I have number two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on January fourteenth. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. Close the voting.
Just wait.
Up. Are reopened?
It's reopened.
Okay, we're good.
We'll vote again.
Thank you. Sorry.
Rayan, now we'll close the voting.
Didn't take.
I'm gonna screw everybody up.
Yeah, I'm a bad boy.
There you go.
There you go. That motion passes.
We do it nice because we do it twice.
We'll move then to Agenda I have number three. This is a public hearing, a public hearing on the 1,005 channel Parkway Marshall Machine Shop, the public hearing regarding the business tax abatement request. Following the public hearing, then we will consider the resolution that would approve the business tax abatement. So to conduct a public hearing, I'll call on city administrator Sharon Hanson.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you and in your packet is the information containing a request for tax abatement for the Marshall Machine Shop. They did add a 7,500 square foot addition to their existing building. That building has been complete and is now almost fully operational with the, with the new addition. The amount of the abatement over a five-year period is approximately $8,856. Of course, it's assessed and the actual amount will be determined on that given year. The EDA board did hear that request for abatement at the January fifteenth EDA board meeting and recommended approval to the city council. So the requirement of the state statute is that we do conduct a public hearing for this tax abatement.
Thank you, Sharon. As part of the public hearing, any first any comments from the EDA representatives?
Not really. I'd say it was brought to the EDA board as unanimous approval, so.
Any comments either from the council or input as part of the public hearing from the council or the members of the audience? If not, I would.
I move we close the public hearing.
Just one quick comment in the conversation at EDA, talking with Doug, you know, one of the things we've talked about in the past is, you know, when is the application? When should we make it? We had talked originally in our procedure to do it at the start of the project and before construction. In this case, it was an interesting conversation with Doug as far as how this project progressed from when it started originally to the intent to what it ended up being. I think Doug, you mentioned it changed quite a bit, so it was actually quite an advantage to wait until the completion of the, the project, which is probably something we'll take into consideration when we review the, the policy and the procedures for the, the tax abatement. He made some very good points that, you know, things really change along the way and better to know about, you really know what you have in more than what you have in the beginning. So appreciated those comments.
And Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and, and to go along with that, I, you know, I know that we've had a lot of discussion as we've developed out the abatement policy and, and I, I fully believe that this is a, a program that, that we need to continue to push as an inclusive program to encourage this type of development. It's an enhancement to the community. It's an enhancement to our business community and it's a small incentive that we can offer to have new and existing businesses expand and improve their operations and grow within Marshall. And I think it's a, it's a good set to continue to advance Marshall in our future and I really support it and I'm, I'm really glad that Mr. Anderson came in and is taking advantage of it.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Thank you, Greg. If not, is there?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Procedural item, Kyle, you want this as a voice vote?
The vote will be electronic.
The, so the motion made and seconded in any discussion? Then we will then move to a vote on the motion to close the public hearing. We'll close the voting and the motion passes. Now we'll consider the resolution. Any questions about this resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
The only thing I want to add is, as a pusher of this, and I think that these tax abatements are good for the city, good for the businesses, good all around and it's, you know, it's our way of the city saying to these business owners, thank you for investing in Marshall because these are expensive investments that these owners are doing.
Yep. And Sharon?
I just want to add that Doug Anderson, the owner of the Marshall Machine Shop is in the audience. I told him he did not have to speak, but I also didn't want to thwart his opportunity if he wanted to speak and so I didn't get a yea or nay, but I did want to point that out. And I don't know if Doug, you wanted to say anything? Okay.
I would just say thank you, Doug. Again, as council member Lizinski said, thanks for your continued investment in the community as a respected businessperson and employer. So thank you. Any other input as part of, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion passes. Thank you. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is a consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda. And they include the South Fourth Street Reconstruction Project, consider the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on the improvement. South First Street Reconstruction Project, consider the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on the improvement. Consider the approval of temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce. Consider the application for exempt permit for Holy Redeemer Church of Marshall. Consider the application for exempt permit for the United Way of Southwest Minnesota. The 2020 Lifesavers Conference, the Merit Center State of Minnesota Amendment of Lease Number Three. Consider the resolution to advertise for consulting services for Southwest Municipal Regional Airport. Consider the engagement letter for audit services for the 2019 financial statements. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number ten, please.
Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion on the remaining items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Agenda I have number ten, the Merit Center State of Minnesota Amendment Lease Number Three. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question on the, on the agenda item. It says the renewal of an existing lease, but I understand that this is probably the CDL testing that's not being done currently in Marshall, correct? And so it's, it's an amendment to the lease, not a renewal. But my question is, I'm just curious, how was the rate arrived at?
Addressing this question will be Jim Marshall, Director of Public Safety.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Regarding your question, that question was actually raised last year and I think Councilman Baricola had brought that question up. It's a lease agreement that we've had in place for a number of years now, maybe three. Obviously, maybe with lease number three might be the third year that we've had this agreement with the state of Minnesota. A little bit of history and I don't know if you had a chance to review the agenda item report. About three years ago, we had asked the state of Minnesota maybe to stop doing their CDL testing on our city streets. And at that time, they moved away from the city of Marshall and went to different regional centers, specifically Wilmer, which required all of our trucking companies or bus companies to do that testing there, would have to hire people to go with them. And that wasn't working. We kind of heard a public outcry from them as well. So in an effort to bring them back, the state of Minnesota, the Department of Motor Vehicles backed to do, conduct their testing in Marshall, came up with the option to utilize the Merit Center for that testing. After the question last year, I had a chance to research it and I contacted Brett Thomas, who was the regional supervisor for the DMV in our area, and also Ashley, I forget his last name, he's the lease agreement coordinator with the state of Minnesota, and just kind of worked through that and how they came up with that, that, that rate. I was informed, and I just confirmed this again last week with them, I was informed that our lease agreement with the state is somewhat unique. A lot of the facilities where they conduct CDL testing, where it's done in parking lots is owned by the state of Minnesota. I think they referenced to four of them, if I can remember, three of them in Metro Area, one in Rochester. And they said, when they utilize parking lots outside of that, the rates go anywhere from zero to $50 a month. So they said the rate that we charge is a little bit higher than most. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is more than what they're paying at other locations. And we talked about different options, but I think we want to continue that testing here in, in the city of Marshall. And I'll answer any other questions, but they, I asked if those rates were fair, if they're consistent, if they align with other rates that they have with the other agencies or other cities. And they said, yes, a little bit higher, actually.
And then just a point of clarification, too, that is in the packet, is that the only part of the CDL tests they're doing out there is the skills part, the backing and docking. And that was a concern on the city streets. They still use the city streets for, for driving, lane changing, cornering and that type of thing, but the skills portion is done at the, at the Merit Center. And now the amendment to the agreement is not at the Merit Center if it's not plowed. If it's not plowed, then they get to use city streets for that portion, but it takes the pressure off the city streets having the merit as part of an option, correct?
Right. Actually, the lease really didn't change at all, the agreement. All it really, it's kind of a verbal agreement that we have with them at this point in time, mainly because, as I mentioned in that report, the concerns that we have over the expenses related to snow removal and trying to work closer with, with our street department and how that plays out. But they were more than willing to work with us. They understand maybe the expenses that go with snow removal and to get to meet their schedule of two times a week to have it plowed in timely manners, just maybe cost prohibitive. So they said, you know, again, we talked about different options, but one is to kind of go on our timeframe when we can get it plowed. And if we can't, that they would conduct the rest of those tests on city streets like they do in most other communities.
And Jim, I would assume that there are more CDL licensed being, testing being done in the summer months versus the winter months? Is that?
You know, you would think, but not really. There's a total level, pulling the numbers from, I think, 2018 and Brett kind of reinforced this as well, they're pretty consistent. Well, you can see there's about 251 exams. Now, I don't know how many are motorcycle, how many are, are CDL ones, but when you look at the months, it's pretty consistent. Actually, maybe the winter months spike up just a little bit more.
And that's interesting. And my last question was, and I think Craig made a reference to that, or maybe Glenn, you can answer this. Are the number of times that we don't plow it, I mean, and we have them on city streets, I mean, we had businesses complain, are, are we making businesses aware of that situation now that we're going to try and get everything out to the, to the track?
We always try to get them out to the track, but they have a contract right now with a private entity to do all the snow removal out there.
But I'm talking about the CDL testing on streets?
Right. Same thing.
Okay.
On the streets. Yeah, we, we clear the streets, of course, and we'll, we'll make arrangements if necessary.
Does the city clean the track or is that, is that hired out?
It's hired out.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And however, it, it's very expensive to do that, especially when you have wind conditions and you have a two-inch or four-inch or six-inch snow and you remove it and then by the next testing procedure, it needs to be done again or before, before then. So we understand the expense involved and we'll work with them to help out when we can, but our priorities are the streets. And then if we need help at some other time and we're available, we will do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
I would just like to thank you for checking into what the other rates are. I think it's important for the citizens of Marshall to know that we've investigated and we really try to come up with fair rates. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I move approval of the agreement.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I have number fourteen, consider the approval of the 2020 Workers' Compensation Insurance. Carla Drown will present this.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight before you have the 2020 Workers' Compensation Renewal, and that is through the league of Minnesota cities. There's three different options that I've briefly described in one of your attachments. If there's any questions on those three, I, we can certainly go through them. What the staff are recommending is the deductible premium. When looking at the last three years of paid claims, you'll see that in 2017, there was about $2,700. I'm looking at that as an outlier because the following two years were $19,000 and $12,000. And so an average of that is $15,000. So if we look at the deductible and keep it at our $5,000 deductible, we get a $17,600 deduction in our premium. If we spend $15,000 in claims again in 2020, that's still a $2,000 savings as we're looking for premiums. The city holds a little bit more risk in the deductible, but yet in the past, we have continuously saved money. So the staff is recommending option two. We do have Sheldon Kimbling here from Bremmer as our agent, and if he has, if you have any questions, he's here to also answer questions for you.
Okay. Thank you, Carla. Questions?
The experience modification went down slightly and that had an effect on our rates here. Was there a reason that it went down this year?
That is based on our past claims. So when claims go down, then the modifier goes down as well.
That outlier year probably had an impact.
Yeah, the outlying year.
The, when I look at it, the experience modifier, actually, when it's larger, you get a more reduced premium, don't you?
I'm gonna let the expert explain that.
The experience modification is based off of your individual claims for everyone else that has that same class code. So they'll take all the municipalities that have that class code and they say, we expect X number of dollars of claims. And if your actual individual claims are higher than that, your experience mod goes up to a plus anything over 1.00. If your individual city's claims are less than what the other municipalities that have that same class code are, then your experience mod goes down and you receive a credit for that amount. It does not change the rate at all. The rate is established and then your individual claims will go up or down, or excuse me, will affect your premium up or down through the state's experience modification.
Yeah. The reason I was asking that because the premium was $430,000 and you reduce it by the experience modifier to get the standard premium. And so it appeared that the larger that is, but it's not that way.
The premium discount is based off the premium size. There's a set premium discount and then you have your experience mod that goes on side of that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's an extremely good mod rating, .63. As somebody who pays workers comp quite a bit of it, that's a very good moderating at .63.
That's because we're a very strict employer.
Well, it reflects on our employees being careful. It reflects on a lot of things.
As well as the safety committee.
Carla kind of talked too about the, the discount, the premium, or excuse me, the, the, what's the word? Yeah, the deductible. By you paying some deductible, that obviously affects that as well. So it's a claim, but it's not a claim that's paid, so it reduces that.
Any other questions for either Carla or Sheldon? Not the.
Approval?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I have number fifteen. This is the resolution awarding the sale of the General Obligation Capital Improvement Bonds. Annette Storm with us tonight will also introduce Terry Heaton, I assume.
Yes.
And will present the bond sale that was, what happened earlier today.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor and council. Since council last took action for the 2020 A bond, the city has gone through a bond rating and then also the, the bond bids were due to the city hall this morning. And here to go over those results is Terry Heaton with Baker Tilly.
Thank you, Annette. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm here to present results today and I'm always happy when I can bring you good news, so delighted to be here tonight. The, the bonds for General Obligation Capital Improvement Plan bonds were offered in the amount of $6.5 million. And in our offices this morning at 10:00 AM, we received four bids representing 41 financial institutions along with the syndicate bids. So that's a lot of market interest. Your timing, your credit rating and the, the offering today all came together and resulted in a low bid from UBS Financial Services, and that was the handout tonight with the bid tabulation. The first, the first bid listed is from UBS Financial Services Syndicate and on the far right is 2.099%. And this is for a 20-year bond. This is a bond, I'm guessing we will not need to come back and refinance at any point. We had estimated in early January, late December that it would sell for about 2.5% and arguably, we put in a little bit of contingency, you know, 10, 15, 20 basis points, but certainly not 41 basis points, which is what we saw today. The, and I can't call them savings, but the difference in the estimate from when you approved the bond sale to today is about $300,000 of interest savings, you know, less than our estimate a month ago. As Annette indicated, the, the other piece of this is we receive a premium bid. And so what happens with that is if you, what it means is they paid more than $6.5 million for your bonds. When we award the bonds, the true interest cost is a combination of the price and the coupon that they've bid and it comes into an overall net interest rate. And because they paid cash in order to keep their interest rate low, we were able to reduce the amount of borrowing. So you're still getting $6.5 million for the city hall, but you're able to issue bonds for just $6,170,000 because of the price that they paid. So that's also good news as far as, you know, the dollars amount that you're showing on your debt. And so all of that translates into that low interest rate. The credit rating that Annette referred to, again, your, your team, Sharon Hanson, Annette Storm were both on the call and presented, represented the city very well. You were, you were able to maintain the double A stable. And again, for the viewers, the highest rating is triple A, then double A plus, then double A. And then there are many notches below that. So it's a very high rating and very appealing in the market. And they had several comments of a lot of the strengths, including strong management, good financial policies and practices under their financial management assessment, strong budgetary performances and very strong budgetary flexibility and very strong liquidity. And I think we always talk about how cities of Minnesota do have a lot of liquidity, it's just how we're different when they put us on a national scale. And they talk about the debt being in the weak category, but we see that throughout the state of Minnesota because we're stronger, we have the ability to bond and we're stronger in maintaining the infrastructure and the facilities that we have too. And you see that from state to state as well. But, but they also noticed that 79% of your debt will be retired within 10 years, which is an offsetting category because you're not deferring payment of it, you're paying it in a very short pay, timeframe. And I think it's specific, you know, patting you on the back and your staff, they talk about the pluses being that you have monthly or quarterly budget to actual performance reports that are presented to the council, monthly investment reports, you annually update a five-year capital improvement plan, you have an investment policy, a reserve policy, and they, they agree with your, your change that you recently made to have the five months of the following year's expenditures in the special revenue fund and the general fund for, and so the economics of the special fund. So all of those are strengths that they see and so it's a congratulatory, you know, always looking at that double A credit, it's important to maintain and it's a night, a nice rating to have. So with that, unless there are any questions, or I'm just happy to answer any questions you might have about the sale today. And of course, we recommend the low bid from UBS Financial Services.
Thank you, Terry. The, and thank you to the staff that worked to retain our good credit rating. So thank you. Open up for questions.
I move approval.
One second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John for the award of the General Obligation Capital Improvement Plan Bonds as recommended. Discussion on that motion?
The only discussion I have is, this really couldn't have gone any better, could it? I mean, to be blunt to our viewers, I mean, 2% is about as cheap as we're ever gonna see. Or 2.1% technically.
We used to celebrate when I, under 4%. So it's, and this is lower than even a year ago and when we look at, when, when we did the, the pre-sale document, we included a little graph and you can't see it from here, but it was bouncing around in here and you really caught it at this point where it's very, very low right now in the last couple of months. It's been moving five or 10 basis points, but it's, you know, at this very, very low point. So yes, your timing was excellent for this project.
Perfect. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion passes. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We'll move then to Agenda I have number sixteen, consider the approval of memorandum of understanding with the Marshall Amateur Hockey Association regarding ice time fees for 2020 to 2026. Presenting this, Scott Vandermeil, Director of Community Services. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, at the January fourteenth meeting, council awarded a bid for the purchase of a new Zamboni to be utilized at the arena. At that time, information was shared with the council that Marshall Amateur Hockey Association generously stepped up to share in that cost and that a revised agreement based on ice time fees would be brought forward at this meeting. You've had an opportunity to review the revised agreement and before I would introduce Josh Johnson from Maha, I'd welcome any questions that you have on the revised agreement.
Thank you, Scott. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, Scott, I have a question and maybe this will be more addressed to Josh. The new agreement, current agreement goes through August of 2021 and that is at $70 an hour for the first 450 hours, but yet the new agreement says it's going back down to $65 an hour.
Yeah.
Is that a mistake or is that?
No. As you noticed, Russ, on the 1920, on, on the 1920 rate, that's the rate that is currently being paid, that That is the rate that we worked with Maha to stay with until the end of the 2526 school year. So it's at the current rate of 6545.
Okay, my apologies, because in 2021, it's going up to 70. But in the new agreement, you're saying that it's going to go back down to 65.
What I'm saying is, is that currently, and we're currently in 1920, the rate is 6545.
Correct.
That rate will remain the same until the end of the 2526 year. And I believe that indicates that in the revised agreement.
The $70. Russ, Russ, you are right. It was going to go up to 70 and they're going to put it back to 65.
It's going to stay at 65. It's not going back to 65, it just would not.
Well.
But again, the current agreement that we have signed.
We have an agreement that it's at 75, and if it's 70, it's going down to 65.
Yes, Russ, that the current agreement that we have in place would go to 70 September 1 of this year.
Correct.
But what we're, what we're agreeing to with Maha is that we would keep that rate the same through 2526.
Well, I'm sure there's other, I guess I just have a problem because, I mean, I applaud the Hockey Association and for stepping forth for the half, the half of the Zamboni. But now it seems like we're Paul Harvey and we're getting the rest of the story here on a six-month, six-year agreement versus we had a three-year agreement. So I'll just reserve any other comments until further presentation.
Sure.
Is Josh going to make a presentation? Well, I guess I'd, before we bring him, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. Is, first of all, and I'd have to look back in, I don't know, I'm going to propose, propose this out as, as now that we've opened the conversation up. What would the intent be then? Would it be fair to increase the ice time by $5 every year through 26 then? I mean, each year add $5 to it?
Here's a question, and I know I visited with you about this earlier, Craig, is if we leave it at 65, what happens in 2026 when all of a sudden this runs out? And we, you know, we probably won't be at this council, somebody else will be. And they look and say, well, we got to jump there, ice time $35 an hour now. It, it's, on a six-year agreement like this, you kind of put a little more on the front end with a little less on the back end to balance it out.
I think it's, but that's based on an assumption that that's the only revenue piece. The money that Maha pays for ice time is one piece of the revenue for the arena. The arena and Expo Center isn't just hockey, although Maha is our primary resident there or user. But I look at them as a business partner. They're, I don't even look at them as a tenant. They're a business partner on a tenant agreement. They took on a new role of running the concessions, they generate a lot of revenue. They're proposing to just put almost $65,000 upfront cash into the Zamboni purchase. The reason why I asked about the $5 increase, I ran some numbers here, assuming that they're renting 800 hours of ice a year, adding $5 each year, 21, 22, 23 through 26, so that in year 26, they're paying an additional $24,000 for that 800 hours of ice time. It generates a total of $84,000 revenue over that period of time. But it probably does a good job of killing, or at least maiming, the Maha program. So if you think about this bigger picture, the people that pay those membership fees to Maha to have their, their kids in hockey are a fairly consolidated area, Marshall and some surrounding communities. But if you look at how Maha generates the revenue, where the $65,000 is coming from, is a lot bigger draw than those same members of Maha, because it's the tournaments and all the other functions that they're bringing in. So now that money used is coming from a bigger area and not our taxpayers. They're a partner to us. They're not just a tenant. And I think that the partnership is a two-way. And I think that to answer your question, Jim, is in 2026, I assume that the relationship with Maha sharing in the operations expense and investment within Red Baron Arena and Expo and Southwest, and, and our Southwest Amateur Sports is going to continue to grow and remain. And I guess in 2026, I have to look at that, is that a needed place for revenue? But at this point in time, I think it's a smarter investment to partner with them and let them invest with us in these, in these expenditures. They put almost $5,000 earlier into a sound system in the Lockwood side. Because it just, they didn't want to come here and ask for money. So now when you look at that, it's almost $70,000 in one year. And we can, we can go ahead and do this, and we can charge them $84,000 through 26 and maybe damage a partnership. That's just, that's my input.
And I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is we start with a, with a base. And I know I threw out the early $70, raise it some, and hold it there for six years. To keep it at a flat 65 where we've been at for the last three years, now we haven't raised their, their hourly rate for nine total years. So I think we're getting way behind on the, on the eight ball here. We have to answer to our taxpayers, why are we not increasing this? And they've been good partners, don't get me wrong. So I think we need to do a small bump at this time and hold it for six years. Not, you know, so they know what their fixed costs are. So I think 65 is not the right number. I think it needs to be higher than that. I think that's something we should work out, but I think 85 is too high at the end.
Right.
I think we need to come, and I know you and I had chatted, I think 70, 72, 50, and then lock it in there for six years. Now you guys know what your cost is for six years, you have your fixed costs. It's a little higher than they want on the front end, but if we do a two and a half percent increase for the next six years, it's a lot lower on the back end. So I, I think that would be something that we should entertain. I'd be very open to that.
Other input from the council before we bring up Mr. Johnson?
Well, I've been looking at this too, and I contacted city staff. And you were kind enough to provide me with some numbers as far as how many hours that Maha uses for ice rink rental periods, and how much rent they paid the last three years. And you also gave me some amounts that neighboring communities are charging for ice time. And the city of New Ulm evidently is charging somewhere between $143 and $156 per hour. Redwood Falls, it's between $95 and $125 per hour. Wilmer is charging $150 per hour. And Hutchinson, a city similar in size, so that's $170 per hour. So, and, and if you look at the rate we're charging Maha, really, there's a 65 and a 45. So really, the average rate we're charging them is $55. Because half their hours are at 65 and about half are at 45. So really, we're charging them about $55 per hour. And you can see the rates at other communities are substantially more than that. What, what I feel, and we're again, we're locking this in for an additional five years in addition to what we have right now. I did some spreadsheet analysis here and I, here's an example. If we, if we just increased the rate for those last five years and left the remaining years as they are, we would produce the yearly rate would be about 69,000. They're paying about 48,000 right now. That would produce an extra $21,000 per year for five years, that's $105,000. They're offering to pay a $64,000 amount on the Zamboni. We'd be $41,000 better off if we went with that plan. And so what I'm, I guess what I'm thinking here is there's a lot of numbers involved. It's a long-term commitment. We're, we're going five years more than what we have right now. Maybe we should send this back to city staff, crunch some numbers, and maybe it's not the best idea right now to enter the five, the extra five-year contract. And maybe it's not in our best interest to accept the money for the Zamboni, rather instead going with a higher rate. I think we should do further analysis on this and decide what is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city of Marshall. Because as Jim mentioned before, we're accountable to them, that we need to spend the money wisely and they have to feel that what we're doing makes sense. We want to be fair to Maha, but we also want to be fair to the taxpayers. So that would be my recommendation. Send it back, look at some numbers, and renegotiate this. And maybe instead of a five-year contract, we could come up with a two additional year contract. And they would still get a, a lower rate and help pay for the Zamboni. But the idea that in, after the two years, additional two years, then the rate could go up even more.
Glenn, in response, in response to that, Glenn, and I would just comment on what Craig said earlier. I think the most important thing out of what Craig said is, and I would let Josh speak to this as well, but this, this agreement amongst other things allows Maha to maintain their programs at an affordable rate for families across the board. It allows them to plan for the future in terms of what those costs are going to be to those families and where they can reallocate funds for other projects that quite frankly, the city might be interested in partnering with them as well. So in, in terms of coming back and crunching the numbers, I did extensive work on this and I'm pretty confident that this is a solid agreement. So I'll, I'll, I'll be glad to take it back, but I would come back to you with a very similar agreement with the number of years at the same rate.
I would just add to what you're saying, Scott, in that the, it's in our interest as a community to have a strong base program out there, because then that allows the overall program to expand. And, you know, whether it's attracting additional tournaments or additional activity out there, it works because there is a strong base program and a strong core of volunteers that are committed to that program. Otherwise, and we've seen that in, back in some of those other communities that you've referenced, where they don't have a strong of a, a base program, and then they struggle with attracting tournaments. And the very thing we want to be able to have visitors stay for the weekends in our community.
And Bob, you probably know more on the detail of this, but I know like New Ulm is an example because they've got a very high ice rental rate. When they first built their new arena over there, they didn't do local option. And they funded that out straight. And so that all went on the backs of the programs and they, they really damaged their program. And then they came back kind of after the fact and tried to recover that. And I mean, I know that, you know, Glenn, your numbers are solid, I get that. I mean, there's two ways we can do this. We can operate this as we're a for-profit, have to make profit, have to be in the black, on the book on this facility. Or we can look at it as the community, regional facility that's supposed to be, and look at it whole picture with the local option sales or the, with the hospitality taxes part of the overhead and O and M on the facility, looking at Maha as a partner out there. Because we partner with Maha, we partner with MABA, we're looking at the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission to partner with other youth sport and, and the, and the community activities piece. Maha's talked about dry land, there's interest from the college and the high school in that. The high school's probably not able to financially commit, but there's a significant interest with the college and Maha. Otherwise, I mean, if we, if we go completely from a business model, charge them the overhead and separate from that, that's fine. But then we're going to have to have the, the commitment, we can't ask them for the commitment then to do these other developments. So it's a bigger picture piece, and I mean, I get it, but there, there has to be trust. These, the people that are leading Maha are also from the community. I mean, it's not like, it's not like they're in here asking for a gift out. This is a partnership and it's been pretty effective. And I think it's performed probably better than I thought it would. And I really think that, that it's strong and I think we should try to encourage it. Again, if we make a mistake on this, we'll have to come back. But, I mean, I don't know, I'll, you know, I'll lead the discussion. I threw it out there to leave it as it's presented, but if there's a discussion with Jim's thing about 70 and Josh needs to take that back to the board, I mean, I guess we'll have to, you know, that's something we need to talk about. But I really think we need to respect this as that partnership. And they've shown it with the concessions. I mean, they saved us on the concession thing. We were way upside down on that. We would be struggling if we, if we didn't have them to lean on. A lot of these other communities probably operate from a completely different business plan, but they don't put the tournaments on and they're not getting the reactions that we get. This, this place really shows better than you can believe. You have to be out there and experience it to really figure out how good it is. Scott?
The last thing I would want to add, and, and Jim, even if you put that $5 on that 65 and bump it to 70 and you, you know, Glenn talked about crunching the numbers, but if you just add that five over a six-year period, you're doing that on the first 450 hours, which Maha achieves fairly quickly. So it's just on a guaranteed 450 hours. So at the end of the day, are you bringing in another four? And I'm not a math major, but another $4,000 a year for six years? Is that worth? Is that worth throwing this agreement out and starting over?
To the majority of our taxpayers, the answer is yes. I just had somebody jump me about this last week, why do we keep this thing open? So yes, there's a lot of taxpayers out there that right now would say, absolutely.
Well, as a, as a taxpayer and not a city employee, I would disagree with that, but respectfully.
Scott?
I think, you know, I think the number you were looking for, if you go in from 65 to 70 in 450 hours is 2,250 bucks. We're talking about maybe 2,250 bucks into an organization that is not a for-profit organization. They're one that contributes to the community, they've paid for part of the Zamboni, they're running the concessions, and that money is coming back and like you mentioned, the sound system and a number of other ways. This is also giving us our youth some activities that are good, solid activities to partake in. So I'm perfectly fine with your, with the agreement that you have at as well.
I think, I think we don't want to forget that we have $64,000 sitting on the table.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Did you want, did you want to speak? You've been standing up back there.
You know, to answer your question, we do have $64,000 on the table. But if we increase them at two and a half or 3% per year, we could pay for that Zamboni. They have a reasonable increase because that's cost of living increase and save our taxpayers money at the end of the day.
Thanks.
We, remember, there is a chunk of the city that does not think this is a good idea and we got to make it viable for them too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Just to maybe address some of your concerns, I tried to mentally remember them. And Councilman Bearcole, you mentioned those other towns. When you go to New Ulm, there's a reason why we play most of our games in Sleepy Eye. We don't play a lot of our games in New Ulm. We are extremely fortunate and extremely blessed to have a working relationship with the city as Maha does. That's not the case everywhere. And then you could look at those communities that you mentioned, you're not going to find a relationship like that. So, and then you come into a less see, less or relationship where Maha would simply show up, we'd skate, and we'd leave. We wouldn't have extra parents cleaning up to help offset costs of, of city workers. We wouldn't have parents scraping gum off bleachers. We, we have a culture of ownership that we have since we've had owned a rink, and we kept that, and we kept that on purpose. The city staff has asked us a few times for extra help with things along that to avoid increasing labor costs. And we were more than happy to do so. We added that to every tournament we have out there. You mentioned concessions. We, we've worked closely with CBB and the Expo and all their other things that they do outside of hockey. Our parents are there and they're showing up and they, they're owners. You don't see that in Redwood and you don't see that in New Ulm, you don't see that in these other facilities. So I think that's something to kind of keep in mind. There is, I, there is a dollar that you can't really attach to that. That does not go in a spreadsheet. So, and then when I ran, ran some numbers too as well, just to kind of try to get my mind wrapped around it as, as the board discussed it. You know, there's, there could be a $80,000 swing in there. And so does that make sense? And then you have to ask yourself, well, if I give the city $65,000 now, what's the time value money calculation? What, what does Maha need to make on that money between now and then to kind of be a push? You know, and I, I didn't do that, but just kind of working with numbers, that's, that's, that's a pretty low number for interest, you know, on that, on that $65,000 to kind of, to kind of flush through. So we also have to be aware that Maha has waived any sponsorship revenue rights off the Zamboni as well. So just because we're purchasing half of it doesn't mean we're going to get half the revenue from that. So that revenue runs five, five to 8,000, somewhere around in there. We waive that right, that, that we just say, you know what, that's, that goes to the Red Baron. We're, we're not claiming any of that as well. So if we look at what we would have put in there, we're at year five. If we jumped the 65 in there, we're almost at $90,000 that Maha has reinvested back into the Red Baron. So when you have taxpayers that call you and say, why aren't you raising the rates? What is going on? You say, what other organization is reinvesting in something that they use? Maha is reinvesting and has a, a, that culture of ownership as well. The other things that we've been doing, I think we just don't brag enough about. And I, and I've, we probably should, is the things that we are doing out there. And also the things that we're doing for our kids. We do nearly 20 scholarships for kids to play hockey. We don't like to talk about that, obviously, but here's. about that, obviously, but there's, there's 20 athletes out there that are getting reduced or free hockey. And that's stuff that we do through concessions and our other revenue streams as well. And this allows us then to expand that, that culture of hockey. So we know what our fixed costs are going to be. We know that we can expand into summer programs, summer hockey, some summer, summer things that we can do with the kids to get them involved and keep them busy in the summertime. We know our costs and we can feel comfortable about expanding that, expanding that out as well. So I don't think you're going to find an organization, I think, I think we can brag tonight a little bit of an organization that works with the city, works with the chamber, works for CVB, works with any expos that are going on out there hand in hand. You know, it's doesn't, we do a lot more outside than just hockey. So that, Councilman Luszinski, I think that's how you answer your taxpayers.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you for your leadership in Maha. Steve?
Josh, you said you don't skate at New Ulm. Based upon your best guess, how many tournaments do you suppose New Ulm is losing because of their?
You know, it's pretty tough. I know they have a tougher time. An example would be we showed up to, to actually play a game in New Ulm, which was kind of shocking. And they were just getting done with the tournament and they were having a championship game at three o'clock in the afternoon and their other rink had figure skaters on it. And you want to make a bunch of Bantam A parents mad is they had all this ice, but they don't have enough working relationship with their community to say, you know, we need that ice and can we work with the skaters like Maha does? When we had the Blizzard, we called the figure skaters and said, hey, we're starting a little late. You guys want to sleep in a couple of extra hours? You can come in a little bit later. They don't have that. So I, you know, I think they're losing, they're not filling all the tournaments. I know that like we are. It's, it's tough to quantify and get that, but.
And then on a follow-up question, on a tournament, how many adult volunteers are manning the cleanup crew and the concession stand?
On any given weekend, yeah, it'll take 30 to 40 adults.
And how many hours are they spending doing that?
Uh, that varies. Your top, your top third are there all weekend. They, from Friday noon to Sunday night, you know, and then your, your middle third. It's just like any other organization, Steve, you know, 80% of the work's done by 20% of the people, you know.
But from a city standpoint, Sharon, how much do we pay city employees? If a city employee was doing this work, how much would be our cost?
He's substantial.
Substantial?
Before we had their volunteering, Thursday nights, I was out there till two in the morning cleaning to get ready.
Right.
With, we're a whole time guy on overtime.
So when you're looking at the tax benefits coming in with the external teams coming in, spending money, the free labor, for lack of a better word, it's free appreciated labor for both cleaning and I've been out there for a bunch of conferences and the place is still immaculate, you know? You don't go to many, many hockey rinks that stay really, really nice because they get used and you know, kids are kids. This place is still a gem. I, you know, I see the taxpayer issue, but let's look at it. If we raise their prices, what are you going to have to do to your prices from Maha?
Yeah, so if we went, Councilman Bearcole, just maybe even address that too a little bit. If we, let's say we jumped to $125 an hour, I guess because that's what our neighbor New Ulm is doing, Maha would instantly cut our hours by at least a third. We do a lot of community ice, a lot of ice that's just open hockey, you know, we do a ton of that of hours. That's gone now because we need to be making sure that we don't, you know, have to raise our rates on our members. So we take away all that. We then go to, well, maybe the squirts instead of practicing four nights a week. And you guys are pretty young, you're going to go to three nights a week. We are going to look at cutting the amount of time that we use, use the ice. And then we might have a, you know, I mean, down the road, you might have a board that might say, we'll build our own practice facility and we'll just rent out for games, you know? So it works best if we work all together.
So I think what I would do is, is we have a dichotomy of opinions upon, among the council members. Whenever you get into a five-year plan and a five-year lease plan, that is long and we're talking about a lot of things that we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what the economy's going to do in five years. Baker Tilly said, you know, if we look at that report, Marshall's economy is weak. So if you looked at that, maybe five years is a little too long. Would three years be a better thing and could both parties live with a three-year? You know, clearly if the longer you can get for Maha, the better. From the city's standpoint, well, if a year-to-year lease would probably be better because then you can renegotiate every year. Three years is a good compromise, I think. I think, I think I could live with that and everybody's getting it and then you readdress it in three years.
Josh, do you have a reaction, do you think, from your organization? Obviously you'd have to take it back.
I would take that back, but I would, I would maybe counter that with my commercial properties, five-year lease is pretty standard with a renewal actually built in. So if anything, any modification, I could see doing like maybe a four and four. So we'd do a four-year lease with a, maybe a ceiling on a, on a renewal that's already built into the contract. And so then you do four and four and we know that they're building a jump. It would allow future councils and future boards to take a look at it and go, eh, we can stay where we're at. Partnership's working great yet. You guys are still putting where your money, where your mouth is. Or if at that time, for some reason, the Maha board wasn't, or you guys weren't lifting up to your, you know, end of the bargain, we could raise it within the ceiling, within that contract. I think that would probably be something that my board would be interested in, but a three-year, I don't think we would be all that interested in.
I know on my commercial properties, we do five years, but we have an inflation built in. I bet you have an inflation increase built into years over years.
It's usually not every year.
But you have inflation built in to your five-year contracts. We're not building in an inflation rate here. And you know, and we keep comparing New Ulm. Now let's look at Hutchinson. Hutchinson's $170 an hour and they've had four three-day tournaments already this year. So obviously the ice time, their, their cost is not affecting their tournaments. Let's throw that out there. So they have a thriving program. Not that I'm going to be at 170, I'm looking at let's 70 or 75. I think 65 again is too low. You know, we compared to New Ulm, Hutchinson's a much more comparable community. They're $170 an hour and they've already had 12 days of tournaments since December 1st.
I think you also have to look at Hutchinson is, is a comparable community, Councilman Luszinski, but they also, but their proximity to the cities and their proximity to St. Cloud, which we, is District Five in hockey terms, as a lot different cost structure in that region. I like to kind of akin us to the Laverns, New Ulm, New Ulm Sleepy Eye, Redwood Falls is a really good comparison. When you drive into Hutch, there's a lot more retail expansion. There's a lot more things in Hutch than what would say a Marshall would have.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but I mean, it is.
So I, I just don't think you can cut, you know, compare hour for hour for Marshall and Hutch. I don't, I think it's unfair.
And New Ulm's bad comparison in that sense too.
Yeah.
Okay, additional discussion. Russ?
Josh, you know, I don't think anybody's going to question your passion or the Maha's passion and involvement and in partnership as Councilman Schaefer made. I mean, I can't question that because, and I can't put a dollar value on that either. But what I can do is put a dollar value on our costs. Preston made reference to overtime costs. I'm taking away overtime costs. We still have costs for the arena. We have salaries. We have, our costs go up every year. That's why I would like to see some sort of inflation. I mean, if we raise a little bit every year, $2 a year is a lot better than Councilman Luszinski said, if we come in six years and have to raise it 15 or 20 dollars a year. You made reference to Redwood Falls, 95 to 125 dollars an hour. You said yourself that compared to Redwood Falls.
Yep. I would also do that, but Councilman Labatt, I also would ask you that if you went to Redwood Falls and looked at their facility compared to our facility and you looked at the amount of parent volunteers and the community input into that facility, it's, it's none. The reason they have to charge 125 dollars an hour is because the parents show up, they play their game, they leave.
And again, I'm not questioning Maha's partnership, involvement, dedication, passion, anything. I'm just saying that I think you're better off, if we put in an escalator of $2 a year, your board, your parents still know that in six years or in five years, it's going to cost two or four more dollars a year than what it is now. And I just throwing out numbers.
Sure, yeah, I understand, I understand.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, if we come up with a $70 number now and maybe a 7250 in three years, you know, for the first three years it's $70, the last three it's 7250. I think something that can be lived with on both partnerships because the partnership that we have, that you, that much as we value your partnership, you have to value us as well. And I think you do. And I think you also have to be responsive and respect our decision as council members and what we have to respond to our taxpayers.
Yeah, and I would, I would just, I would just hope that your taxpayers are informed as to the whole story.
And that's why, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. So again, I personally, excuse me, I personally do not know that you have volunteers scraping gum off of bleacher seats. I don't doubt it. I mean, I mean, I don't doubt that at all. And Preston, I don't doubt his word being out there until two o'clock in the morning, helping and cleaning and, and doing everything else. Like Councilman Meister said, it is a meticulous facility. We don't have a lot of vandalism. We don't have a lot, as far as I know anyway, we don't. And we don't have a lot, but things do happen. Things do break down. Bleachers get broken. Things can need to be replaced. Those are fixed costs that we have and just salaries alone, if we're looking at a 3% salary increase for city employees every year, our costs go up. So that's all.
I, just a few comments here. Go ahead, John.
Oh, okay. I just, just doing some quick math. You know, you're talking about 90,000 that contributed to Red, a Red Baron Arena. You know, if we look at this contract for the next six years, and I used, if I think somewhere's in there, I got about 900 hours out of the, is what you did.
Eight to 900, yeah.
Eight, 900, so I used 900. So, you know, it's comparable to $16 an hour over that, that 90,000, what, one year, what you've done is really comparable to $16 over the whole 16 years. So if we, we were at $81, it would be a break even. So like I said, I'm perfectly fine with this. I think you've contributed a lot. You know, I'm confident that maybe in one year, two years, three years, you're going to be making another contribution to the arena. It's what you've done in the past. And you know, I think we need to take that into consideration. We're nickel and diming people when you guys are putting 90,000, you know, in one year on the line. So I just keep reminding you of that.
The other part of that calculation is you're assuming that the number of hours that are paid for remain.
Remain the same, yeah. And if it goes up
Wouldn't, so.
To $81, what you're saying is you're probably not going to be able to do $900. It'd be $800. So then we start sliding backwards. So, yeah.
Okay, Glenn.
I don't think this is nickels and dimes. You know, the calculations I come up with, we can have hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're not talking nickels and dimes here. We certainly appreciate what Maha does. We, you know, it's a great organization. They do a lot for our community. But the city of Marshall has done a lot for you. I mean, you've got one of the best hockey facilities in the state and the citizens of Marshall have paid for that facility and they pay to maintain it. So it's a two-way street. You benefit and we benefit. And I think when I look at the numbers here, it would almost look better if we would pay for the Zamboni and increase the rates to taxpayers in that the rates are eventually going up. And when I do the calculations here, even if we say it's $70 for all the hours, it would, if it were five years, it would be a kind of a break even situation where the city would get about $63,000 more in revenues, but Zamboni costs about 64,000. So like I said, I, I would prefer a shorter-term contract. I would prefer to increase the rates and not lock them in for, we're talking six years from now, right? Because there's another year left on this contract and then five years after that. And I, I just don't think that's a good thing to lock in the rate for that long a period. And I do think, you know, we've had a good discussion tonight from all the city council members and that's why I feel it's something that's worthy of going back, analyzing and come up with a solution that we can all live on as far as the length of period, the amount of the, the rent per hour and so forth. I think there's a better solution out there and I think if we put our time in, we can satisfy the taxpayers and Maha with a good solution.
Greg, and then John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I'd like to correct there. I think there's a couple misconceptions and this gets back to something that we discussed earlier about how Jim raised the question about there are taxpayers out there that don't want that building. They'd rather see it empty or see us do nothing. First of all, Councilman Bearcole said that the Marshall taxpayers are paying for that building. Well, the Marshall taxpayers are responsible for the debt, but the debt's being paid 60% not from Marshall. 60% of the taxes that are collected to pay off those bonds are the half-cent local option. Our taxpayers voted for that, but that's collected off of every dollar spent that sales taxes collected on except for automobiles. And that's paid for by people greater than the city of Marshall. The other part about better off city pay, that goes back again. If city pays, it puts it directly on our general obligation debt. So 100% of that Zamboni's then paid for in that formula by taxpayers. If we use the benefit from Maha contributing, how much of your dollars come from people that don't live in Marshall?
A ton.
A ton. The, I'll bet you more than half of the money that you're contributing in that $65,000 is not coming out of Marshall billfolds.
No.
So, I mean, so that's a misconception. That's not 100% accurate. I get, your numbers are right, but the model is wrong. Glenn, how many hours have you spent out at that arena at a hockey game or an event?
Okay, John?
Is that relevant to what we're discussing?
It is because you talk about, no, it is because you talk about what a great facility. It's like people tell me they support our troops, but they, you know, what does that mean? Tell me what that means.
Okay, we'll move to John.
Okay, just a comment. We talk about doing this with Maha. I think we need to keep in mind that, one, my understanding, Maha is a nonprofit.
Yeah.
And Maha doesn't exist except for the kids that are out there.
Correct.
And so we're not doing this for a organization or a company or a for-profit unit. We're doing this really for the kids. So they have a place to go and something to do and some physical exercise and a whole lot of things. So, you know, this is not concessions we're making to what would be a for-profit organization. We're doing this to me for the kids.
With that, and that's, I mean, good point. And I agree with you, Craig, it is sales tax. But if we're doing this for Maha, at what point do we do this for New Sock Facility? Do we do this for a, the softball association? When we say we're doing it for the kids, it's, it's, you know, I'd love to say, let's do this all. And I guess when I said the $70, I didn't think it was that huge of an increase, but it shows an increase saying, yes, thank you for the donation or the health, half of the Zamboni, but it shows also good faith that here's your fixed costs. Yes, we increased you some for six years and it's a good compromise, I believe. I think to see it, and again, I say it's leaving at 65 for, for a total of nine years is not, and I don't want to say good business practice because we're not running a business here. It is, it is a nonprofit. The arena is not set up to make money. I get that. But we do have to cover some of those costs and that's why I propose the $70.
Mr. Mayor, and I, Jim, I think you're 100% right. Josh, if, if we talk about, because I like the four and four. I like that four-year and four-year plan. If we said that at the start of this plan and, because right now the agreement says next year you go to 70, but I believe the secondary is still at 45, is that correct?
I believe so. I don't, yeah.
So what if, what if we proposed for year two, three and four of the first four years, it went in year two, carrying out through those first three, 70 and 50, and it stayed there for those three years and then it has a renew option where we can look at it and possibly in the renew option, if needed and agreed, we raise both of those five more dollars for the last four years?
And I would, I think that's a wonderful idea.
And if we said that, we would support that, would that, is that something you think would be palatable to take back?
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, I, I mean, just kind of off the top of my head without thinking about it, I think that's something that we can come really close to on there. I don't mind putting the, the ability for the council in Maha to sit down in four years, say, hey, how things working? Kind of a nice check-in and even putting just maybe a language in there that a ceiling of.
Right.
That way the city in Maha could say, you know what, it's working.
It's not automatic.
So we can just keep it where it's at and we're all good. Or the city can say, you know, we've had increases in wages and yada, yada, yada. And then we can negotiate, but at least there's a ceiling in there. I don't have a problem with that.
And out of respect to my fellow council members, because I think this has been a really good discussion. And I do think we have that obligation. I really do believe that. And I think that everybody here is sincere about that. And I think that's very respectful. But I also, I have a deep passion for Maha. I have a family relationship with Maha for two generations and I, they have not oversold what they do out there. If anything, and I've, I've chewed. and I've chewed Josh Alfred's, Josh and I sit together on the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission Board, and I, they undermarket, okay? And I would like to make that concept into a motion, that that four by four, if we could, if we could draft that up.
So procedurally, you, are you making a motion?
I am making a motion.
Okay, so can you restate your motion?
My motion would be is to propose an agreement back to Maha that
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. The, our action would be the agreement if Maha does not agree to it.
Then it, then we'd have to revisit.
Yeah, so it's not a proposal.
My, my idea was to send it back and go for further discussion, come up with something, and then bring it to the council for final action.
He's in the middle of making a motion, though, so I'll recognize you. Or not.
I can, I can withdraw that and let Glenn make his motion.
Well, I don't, I don't
I think you just, I think you just stated your motion.
I'm just saying, I think we need to go back and get this discussion. If they're not going to agree to something, we, whatever action we take doesn't have any effect. It's got to be a two-way agreement. And so
Right.
staff and Maha have to get together, come up with something that they both can agree on, and then bring it back to us for final approval.
I think that's a motion that we send it back.
Procedurally, it would be table
Yeah, say, be tabling the motion.
Yep.
Question, I guess I would have before we go into that, about how long would you need, Josh, to go back to your board and relay some of the discussion we've had?
Procedurally, it gets a little complicated there. I mean, I can call a special board meeting. I know in February here, we won't have quorum to be able to do that. We would have to then either do a mid-month special session, or it would be taken up in March at that, at that time.
So, Josh, if we, if we voted on what was said tonight, and we voted pending your acceptance, then you feel fairly confident, oh, this is putting you on spot as a chair. But
What I would say, Councilman Meister, is that, I mean, a four on four, I think conceptually, we can agree on that. I think the numbers look, sound fairly decent. I think what, and and maybe procedurally, you know more than I do. But if the council wanted to approve that pending Maha's approval, that I wouldn't have a problem doing it in reverse. The frustrating part on our end would be is that we continue to go back and work with staff. We come to you. You don't quite like it. We get sent back to staff. I mean, six months later, we are still coming back to you for for more spreadsheets and analysis, where maybe if we have a conceptual idea of a four on four, $70, and, you know, I think that I would, I would move that we are, encourage you to move that we would approve that pending Maha's approval.
Here's what the council, sitting next to me, just wrote up. So for '19 and '20, it stays where it is, because we're just finishing '20. '20, '21 would go as the current contract says, adding, the addition would be is that the 45 secondary would go to 50. That would stay through to the '23, '24. On the '24, '25, it would renegotiate with the ceiling being 75, 55. Okay? And that that would be effective through '28, '29. Okay? And so I'm willing to make that as a motion.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on that motion.
Craig, just a clarification. Your first hourly is at 70 instead of 65?
It stays at, for the remainder of this year, it stays at 65, 45. Then for '20, '21, which would start September 1st, it goes to 70 and 50.
50, okay.
And then it stays there through '23, '24. And then at '24, '25, it renegotiates. And then it actually closes out '27, '28. And the attorney has it for you.
Just sign it off here real quick, Dennis. We'll just get it done, yeah.
The comment I would have is the devil is always in the details. And writing out the details and making sure we got everything correct. And I do think the perception would be better if, instead of paying for the Zamboni, you would have increased rates. That I think would look better to everyone. And whether you pay it that way or through increased rates, it's going to cost you the same amount. And so I think that's something that should be looked at. And it would look like you're, you know, it would show higher rates that you're paying. And I think that that's the goal we want, is to increase the rates over a period of time.
Well, and just a minor clarification, you know, and I think, Craig, you alluded to this before, that the purchase of the Zamboni is not an allowable expense with the food and beverage tax.
Right.
So that would be a general fund expense. So that's the downside of that.
Right. And the other piece, and Josh, I apologize, because I'm going to talk a little bit out of turn for you, but it's what I do special. This is, this comes from conversations that happen at the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission, is that Maha is one of the partners, and we have others. We have MABA, and there's others in the community that have a very strong presence in our facilities. And they take a very active role, both physically and financially. And there are conversations about other things that happen out there. Josh and I had an earlier discussion about what Maha does. And there were a lot of additional things that were loved to have but can't have or couldn't afford at Red Baron. And that's the pieces that Maha philosophically and actually are filling. There are things there that are enhancements. That's the outside potential ice rink that has, you know, outdoor skating. It has a dry land, storage, and training facility that would be additional that they're talking about participating. Granted, those are all in the dream stage now, but they're probably a lot closer to reality, because they are very financially responsible. Maha owned and operated their own facility for a number of years, and they know what it is to own and maintain that. And they don't take that lightly. And it's not lip service. It's it's proved in action. And that's why one of my complaints is they don't market it good enough. So in respect to the rest of the council, I think that's part of it, is that we owe you that better explanation also of what's happening there.
So continuing discussion on the motion. Sharon?
I just wanted to ask, Josh, was the, remind me again, your board, were they unanimous in the support of the donation?
Yeah, this was unanimous. And
The original agreement?
Discussion, the original one, yeah. It was, it was unanimous.
Okay. And then I do want to add, too, when the staff was looking at, just to kind of defend staff a little bit here, we didn't, we evaluated the donation of the Zamboni funds in comparison to projecting out potential rate increases. And we still believe that the city would come out ahead. We also didn't quantify in black and white, but had the realization of the volunteer hours put in by Maha figured into this as well. I mean, we could do a more formal quantification of of what Maha provides, too, to help, help kind of defend the the direction of Maha staff and the council. But I just want to kind of add, we felt that that the city was benefiting from what was presented. Not a lot, but every dollar counts. And and the volunteer time was was a big impact in it, too. So
Other discussion on the motion?
I have one more thing.
Steve?
So the taxpayers, you know, this goes back to when I was first elected. And whether you liked the concept of the Red Baron or didn't like the concept of the Red Baron, whether you voted for it or against it, it passed. It's won. It's built. So now that it's there, we need to really maintain the success of this facility. Keep it as pristine as it currently is. Keep attracting the hockey games, the CVB working on what it's doing. I think that really is incumbent. And if we start raising stuff, the cost is, we don't have any control over the Maha board. None. If we raise it up, and they decide to do what other places do, and say, you know what, we're done with this. The city can figure out its own concessions. The city can cover its own cleaning. Well, now we're down that money. We can anticipate that. We don't know that. We can't pretend to know that. We know that it'll cost us a lot of money, and it'll continue to cost us. And we've already had experience in the concessions, and it wasn't good. So I think this compromise that we've discussed right now is a great compromise. I think Mr. Johnson has come with a good understanding of his board and is confident on that. And I want to do good customer service. I agree with you. Going to the staff, and then to the council, and then back to the staff, and then works at the speed of government, which is intended to do that. So I think that we've had a great discussion. I've appreciated everybody's opinions, and I think there's been a lot of thinking going on, and a lot of discernment. Ultimately, and I'm, I wax extremely conservative. I've got kids. None of my kids play hockey. Never have. I think this is a great thing for our kids. And it's a tax one way or another, no matter what we look at. But if you give me a tax option where I'm going to put it in the general fund, or I'm going to pay a little bit more to help my kids get experience, and kids who may not be able to afford it, they're getting a lot of scholarships, and give them an opportunity to do something good, as opposed to stay off the street and make, you know, Officer Marshall back there a little busier, I'm all for it. So I would speak in favor of voting for this with the compromise that we've discussed, as motion by Councilman Schaefer, and contingent upon the Maha board coming, coming in favor of it and making this. I think this is a great idea. I think this is a win-win-win situation. Win for the city, win for Maha, most importantly, a win for our kids and our community.
And John, and then Russ.
Okay, I just, a couple of things I want to, I guess, concerns me on this. I too will probably vote for the compromise, since we do have a motion out there in a second. But I think procedurally, it would be more appropriate if the council had tabled this and taken it in that direction, rather than try to negotiate seven against one, against another board on this thing. It's great to, you know, throw out a, you know, some solutions, which I think we did. But a little concerned about the the tactics on this. I think procedurally, this should have been handled by a table instead. But we're, you know, we've got a motion, we've got a second, so we need to resolve that.
Procedural question, because council is advising me at the time that we're looking at table, that the timeframe that Josh has to bring his board together a table won't work. The timeframe is too long.
Russ?
I was going to kind of echo a little bit of John's statement, but the only other thing that I would suggest, maybe, Josh, because I can support the 70 and the 50 and going forward. But the other thing I would like to see maybe is Maha making an annual presentation to this council. Doesn't have to be a very long presentation, just that give us a recap of the hours, and say, how's it going, his attendance?
Yep.
Participation up, down, whatever. It just keeps us in the loop a little bit.
I think that kind of reiterates back, Russ, to what Councilman Schaefer was saying, was like, we, we're pretty humble Minnesotans. We don't brag a lot. We probably should be coming here annually.
But you need to toot your horn.
This is how many kids, this is our growth, this is the volunteer hours. We don't track that very well. We track concession hours really well, because you guys ask a lot of questions around that. But I think it'd probably be a good idea for Maha to track the amount of hours we put into the facility. That would be normally facility hours, not, not hockey hours, but, and then, so you can maybe quantify that a little bit for your constituents. I don't see any problems with that at all.
I mean, again, like I said, if you don't toot your horn
Yeah. No, nobody's going to toot for you.
Nobody else is going to.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Other discussion on the motion?
The only thing, everybody else spoke, so I have to speak. But I think it is a good compromise. And I do appreciate you, Josh, being, you're in the hot seat there, as they would say, once a millionaire. So I appreciate you doing that and working this out. I think it is a good compromise.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Oh, I'm locked out. Uh-oh.
Kyle trying to put this into something. There.
Just wait, Kyle. Just wait. Just wait. Okay, we're good.
And close to voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll call for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, this agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. This is a replacement agreement. The agreement that is being replaced costs zero. This agreement costs zero. And our board has considered it and recommends to the city council that you approve this agreement this evening. It's before you and on your agenda due to the city charter provision whereby contracts longer than 10 years in length come to the city council for their consideration. Any questions about the nature or the agreement?
Thank you, Brad. Questions for Brad?
Brad, the only thing, as you heard from previous discussion, a 30-year contract is a long time. There's a lot of unknowns on both sides. And the net cost right now, as it stands, is zero. But having lived through a 30-year contract with a company that I formerly worked for that ended up stymieing us a little bit, could arguably have been part of putting us out of business, eh, I got a bad feeling. Tell me the what ifs.
Yeah, you shouldn't have a bad feeling, first of all. In the power business, long-term contracts are not abnormal. In fact, they're essential. The capital assets that are constructed have to be paid for. They typically last 30 to 50 years. So the underlying contracts reflect that. The asset we're talking about here tonight are dams owned by the federal government on the Missouri River. And we hope that they're there doing their job of flood protection and everything else for many, many years to come. And this deals with the hydropower that is sold from the hydro facilities there. So I can't do better than a zero-cost agreement.
Unlike the zero cost.
Yeah. So, and it really-
You could do better. It could be a positive cost to us. They're paying us.
Well, let's talk about that a minute. The hydropower that we purchased covers about 20% of our needs in the community. It is half price of all the other power that we have to buy. So it's our most valuable asset at the Marshall Municipal Utilities, this long-term contract with the Western Area Power Administration. And now, this contract is not the hydropower contract. This is simply an administrative services agreement that allows and agrees that the towns that make up Missouri River Energy Services, the power agency that we, as a member, created, can pay WAPA for the hydropower monthly, and then they in turn bill us monthly. The administrative efficiencies that are gained out of that serve a good purpose for about a half a dozen reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other question for Brad? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John, to approve the administrative services agreement with WAPA. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Thank you, Brad. We'll then move to agenda number 18, consider the lease agreement with Tracy Aircraft LLC for the pilot training services at the Southwest Minnesota Regional Airport. Glenn and probably Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an interesting program in that Dave Elgar is the primary owner of Tracy Aircraft LLC, and he's working with Tom Hoff in providing a, it's really a grant program to establish pilot training in Southwest Minnesota. It provided a simulator that he needs space for, and it's a one-year program that develops into a longer program, and it's supposed to be, in the long term, self-sustaining. So Dave's been working with Tom Hoff and local educators to try to establish a program through the school systems to provide this training program for pilots as a course that they receive credit for. None of that is complete yet. Okay? They're working on those programs, but they needed a place for it. And it needed to be that one-year agreement with Tom Hoff's group for the grant program. Now, they have a simulator that's, I haven't been out there yet, but they were going to be installing that just the other day in the pilot's training facility. It's just that little small office space by the bathroom that you did your pilot's training, your-
Flight planning.
The flight planning. And they're relocating that into the pilot's lounge.
Okay.
Most people don't use it. Now, you do pretty much everything as an app on your phone. So most of the training is, or the flight planning is done on, separate. Anyway, when they bring this facility to Marshall, it makes the availability of that training local. And this is now for a five-year period of time, and then it can be re-upped. But really, there's a 30-day out on it as well. If it doesn't work out, we have a monthly lease amount. We show the annual amounts that are generated, and I would expect that we'd at least have the full one-year cycle. We would be billing it on a monthly basis, and we'll probably be billing the first two months immediately. We'll be billing Tracy Aircraft LLC, and he'll be seeking reimbursement. They had a request that we build Tom Hoff's entity directly, but that's not who our contract is with. Talking with Dennis Simpson, too, it's an issue where we want to make sure the insurance certificate is with the right entity. It needs to be with Tracy Aircraft LLC rather than Dave personally. So that's something that the motion would be is to approve the lease subject to the appropriate insurance provisions.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Questions?
Only question I have is, it says the term of the lease starts January 2nd of 2020.
Yes.
I'm assuming that date will probably get changed.
No. And we'll charge him for the back-
So we'll backcharge him to January 2nd?
We will.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Move to approve incumbent upon the appropriate insurance coverage under the appropriate business name.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. So agenda number 19, consider appointments to various boards, commissions, bureaus, and authorities. The, earlier this evening, the council met in special session, interviewed applicants for a couple of boards and commissions, and based on those review of the applications and interviews with the applicants, I would recommend that Raymond Sorensen be appointed to a term on the Adult Community Center Commission, and that Paula Botford be appointed to a term on the Library Board. I'd make that recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. The Regional Development Commission has not met since we last met. The Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees actually had their annual meeting two weeks ago at the exact time that we met. So I was not there, obviously, but the, we do have the annual report, and without going into detail, the fund is healthy, it's well-managed, and the, no issues with the fund at this time. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merritt Center met last week. And just kind of a wrap-up for the last quarter, this is Jasmine's coordinator's report. In November 19th through the 21st, Avera Health hosted a three-day CALS, Comprehensive Advanced Life Support Training at Merritt. They utilized all the classrooms for that event and brought 64 health professionals into Marshall from the Southwest Region. Central Crop Consulting held their annual sales meeting on November 26th, one day. Those 81 Central employees attended the event. And then on December 6th, Relco hosted a national sales meeting for 90 of their corporate employees. Some upcoming events of note, in February, the Minnesota State Patrol is hosting a two-day criminal interdiction course for 40 law enforcement officers from across the state. And I actually, just a side note on that, our youngest son Tyler is a law enforcement officer down in Texas and has, also is an instructor at one of the academies. And one of the courses that he went to for special tactics for SWAT had three trainers from Minnesota State Patrol that were there, and the week prior had been at Merritt doing training and spoke extremely highly of the Merritt Center in Texas. So I was pretty proud to hear that. Next month, Merritt is hosting a National Fire Academy course on structural collapse. There's going to be career firefighters, not just volunteers, but these are career full-time firefighters, that are going to be attending the course from Rapid City, Watertown, and Sioux Falls, South Dakota, as well as several Minnesota fire departments. And the majority of these, Jim, are going to be staying in hotels and dining in Marshall. So that's good news on good news. And just kind of a summary, in 2019, there were 7,252 people attending training or events at the Merritt Center. That's an increase of 23% from 2018. That's total heads through the door, okay? In 2018, that number was 5,915. So this last year, 7,252. The place is moving up, okay? It's, that's really, really positive news. The feedback has been fantastic, and the pressures on the driving track, I think, are actually turning up, too. So it's really good news. And then, of course, they also, the county announced that Dan Dismet has accepted the Lyon County Emergency Managers position, and Dan also sits on the Merritt Board. I'm sure we'll figure out how to keep him on the Merritt Board, but I think that speaks well, too, for more things happening just from the local emergency management stuff going out there, too. So just a lot of positives. That's all I have.
Steve?
EDA Board met. I was unable to attend, secondary to job obligations, so I will defer to Councilman DeKramer on that. And my other one did not meet.
Mike?
My questions have not met.
John?
Okay, talk about the EDA Board, you know, covered a number of things. One was the recommendation of Marshall Machine Shop tax abatement, which we took care of earlier tonight. We had an update on the EDA director hiring, waiting for our new EDA director to start work in February. Then we got an informational-
April. She's in work in April.
April.
April, okay. Now, trying to hurry your, hurry your along a little bit, okay? You know, we had discussion about Block 11 and, you know, a few other things going on, just kind of the, and the marketing discussion. So that covers the EDA as far as the utilities. Also had meetings since our last one. And part of the discussion was on the WAPA agreement that we just handled here. Just again, reminder, WAPA is a very serious part of our low-cost power. It is the lowest power that we can get. So just what we can do keeping that is, anything on that is good. So, and one other update, again, he didn't address it, but, you know, the, looking for a replacement for Brad Rose, who will be retiring this summer. And the commission has engaged Baker Tilly as part of that service to do the recruitment and screening and working on that. So at this point, they're just going through, they just finished up the job description, going through that, so they're moving into the next step, getting to the point where hopefully in a month or two, three, we can, they can be doing an interview process of prospective general managers, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. Russ?
Library Board has not met since our last meeting, and Police Advisory Board has not met either. Convention Visitors Bureau met, and we welcomed the three new board members. And working with Human Resources Director Sheila Dubbs from the city, we have started the process of finalizing the job description and interviewing and hiring a new director. So, that's it.
And Jim?
Mine have not met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, let's start at your end again.
Well, the only thing I want to start with, I know I said I wouldn't say anything, but I don't know if it's yesterday or today, there's an editorial in the paper about local public officials, well, public officials in general, about how we have to clean the swamp. I think today, at our discussion once, our council, it makes me proud to be part of this council, so I think we had a good discussion, you know, and we were respectful of each other. So when I read that editorial, and he did pick on local officials, I think that gentleman should tune into our council meetings and see that we have a good council in Marshall, and maybe he should write a different editorial. Just my opinion on that editorial. Other than that, I have nothing else.
And Russ?
Nothing.
John?
Just, you know, curious to find out how the meeting over at Lyon County Enforcement Center went, 6:30 tonight. Just a couple of things on that. I know that's not our area. It's a county that even right now does not need to vote on that until they turn, find out how judgment goes. But for those that are concerned about the cost of an immigrant coming into the county, it's actually maybe counter what most people are thinking. The funding follows an immigrant if they-
Refugee.
A refugee, well, immigrant or refugee.
Right.
Depending on the exact definition of what they're talking about, somebody that's relocating from a war-torn area that goes specifically to a location, which in this case, if they come from that country to Lyon County, then funding follows. If they go to any other location and then decide to move to Lyon County, that funding does not follow. So it is a, if you're concerned about the funding, you actually want to be positive on that in the voting, that allows for an immigrant refugee to locate immediately into the Lyon County area, because then the funding can follow that person. So just kind of an interesting point that you don't realize right off, so.
Thank you, John.
Craig?
Nothing.
Steve?
Just appreciation. I appreciate the discussions that we've had. I appreciate the interaction. I had a couple of questions with policy from staff, and appreciate the rapidity and the accuracy with which they answer my questions, and so I just appreciate being here. Thank you.
And Glenn?
I have nothing.
The, I'll just briefly say today, this morning, Sharon Hansen and I were part of a panel that the state auditor conducted a State of Main Street listening session in Marshall, and I believe this is one of six, do you recall, that are being held around the state? And, and it was a good session, but one of the points I would make is that, it was held at the library, and the state auditor, as well as her staff, had the opportunity to do a little tour through the library and were so complimentary of our library. In fact, the comment was made, this is the nicest library that they have ever been in. So I think that's something we, as a community, should be proud of, is the asset that we have in the library facility. With that, we'll move to staff reports. Sharon?
Mayor and Council, I did include in your packet, under the administrator, subject line, information on Block 11. As most of you know, we did enter into a pre-development agreement, which expired in January, actually, January 14th, to be exact. With the indication that at the end of that pre-development agreement, we would have nearly in place a development agreement coming into play. We did talk briefly on the staff side and with the advice of Baker Tilly about extending the pre-development agreement, but feel that there's enough movement from the developer, Apex Construction Group out of Maicato, to work towards a development agreement without extending a pre-development agreement that expired previously. So currently, staff and Baker Tilly and our council on this from Kennedy and Graven in terms of our tax increment financing is doing some preliminary work on this. I did include the original presentation from Apex in the council packet as well, just kind of as a reminder on what they proposed. Obviously, at that time, it wasn't a lot of detail in terms of the, in terms of the actual design and specs for the building. We do have a preliminary estimate on tax capacity and what's generated. There is a request for incentives from the city of Marshall, and currently, what we are looking at is tax increment financing. And this is based on two reasons. One, according to our housing study, even with the housing development on Legion Field Road, the number of units that was indicated in the housing study, there is still a need for additional housing units. So the, the tax increment financing backs up that study. And secondly, this is a redevelopment of a blighted property. And so utilization of TIF is a good use for redevelopment in that case. It'll also help pay for some of the original demolition that was done by the city. One of the things that we kind of always have to be a little cautious with is, because we're in the early stages, we're kind of taking it step by step, and we're each taking it, kind of moving closer to the middle, so Apex is, and so is the city. And hopefully, we meet in the middle and get to an agreement. And we'll need kind of movement on both sides to keep it, to keep it going. The schedule that was presented in the original PowerPoint from last year, that schedule is really out of date. And so what I did include in the packet is a new tentative schedule provided by Baker Tilly on, and where we're looking at bringing this back to the council for official action. And right now, we're tentatively looking at the end of February to schedule a tax increment financing. We'll see in the next month how far we get on the development agreement and how much more movement we get from the developer. I can tell you that I personally feel good about this, this particular developer. They've done some projects in other communities, and we've done some reference checking on them as well. However, each, each development is, stands on its own, and we will continue to evaluate the merits of the project and determine, as we get closer to the end of the February, if we'll bring this forward to council for a request. But at this time, that's what we're, we're working towards. And so I didn't want you to be surprised at the end of February, again, kind of where we're at and where this is coming from, but we're still, still moving forward on it and are going to work towards it. So one other thing I'll point out in the packet is, we did have Baker Tilly provide a status update in the memo, and it looks like that. If you do get a chance, and you haven't looked at it yet, if you just go back and look at that memo, that would be really good. It kind of summarizes where we're at. So I recommend that. Just want to bring up three other things real briefly. In addition to the state auditor panel today on, on the State of Main Street, really dealing with revenues and expenses for cities and counties and townships, the staff at, at our city offices at SMSU did provide a, kind of a meet and greet with the social sciences faculty today at SMSU. What we've had prior to today is, we've seen each other in the hallway, and we've kind of just kept each other a distance because we didn't want to interfere with each other's work. But it's good to kind of put a name to faces, I think, for both SMSU staff and to the city. We've got a lot of connections. Most of our city staff are SMSU graduates, and I think it was really good for SMSU professors to have that early connection with them and then just hear a little bit about our services. So that went over really well. And I want to provide an update on our strategic plan and branding. The last action we took on our strategic plan was, we actually sent out a link, a survey link, through the chamber, and I believe you did get it as well. We got close to 70 comments on the strategic plan from that, from that survey, really good comments, very supportive. Of course, you know, some, some comments about keeping taxes low, economic development, which is obviously very important to us as well. But we're going to take some of those additional comments and put it into a final document. I really want to bring this back to the council in February and have the council adopt the strategic plan in February, and then the, and then the work really begins. It gets harder. It's, it's hard to put the spade in the ground, easy to talk about problems, and not so easy to solve them. But that's what we're kind of looking at there. And then branding, as we know, that we kind of figured we'd be done in November of last year with our branding, but we've taken a little bit more time on it. I actually have a, a private sector committee that is providing advice and counsel on this, and they've been really thoughtful in ensuring we're going about this the right way. So there's been some really good discussion there, which has delayed us a little bit. And then, in addition, we have a private sector company that's working on the, on the branding as well, and they've been, they've been timely and so forth. But we're hoping to actually launch the new brand at the State of the City. It's a, a little bit ambitious from where we are right now, but that's really what our goal is, and, and I'm kind of looking forward to that, to that project, too, because it's not just colors and logo and taglines, it's really the research data that backs it up. And part of that branding launch is, and talked to Alex Peterson today, we're, we're going to do a video that highlights some community members that feel really good about the city of Marshall. So we don't have any elected officials or public officials that are kind of doing this. We really just wanted to talk to everyday citizens in the city of Marshall. So anyway, just an update on, on that, and if there's any question, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Glenn?
Couple of items. We're trying to put together a Public Improvement and Transportation Committee meeting. We've got significant proposed projects coming up this summer. We'd like to go over the, with those projects with the committee before we bring them to council. We're already thinking about spring and runoff and flooding and those types of things. We don't see an immediate threat at this time with the existing conditions that we have, but that, that can change very quickly. So that's something else that we're, we're keeping an eye on. That's all I have.
Dennis? We will then move to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the information items, which, including the building permits, as well as the list of upcoming meetings. Is there any comments on either of those items or anything else to come forward this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim, to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We are adjourned.